Hey, there we are. All right, I'm gonna call the Springfield City Council work session to order with local.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillor Weber.
Here.
Councillor Mo.
Here.
Councillor Rodley.
Here.
Councillor Blackwell.
Here.
Councillor Doyle.
Here.
And councillor Sal.
Here, thank you.
We have two items this evening. The first one is the planning commission interviews.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Sandy Belson. I'm the comprehensive planning manager. We are here tonight to interview for the vacancy on the planning commission. So we had advertised earlier this year, had four applicants. Two have since pulled out. One is here tonight. I'm not sure if the other one can come a little bit later this evening or not. I'm trying to get a response back to see if he could make a, I know he can't make it here right now, but if he could come a little bit later. So anyway, we do have Corey Burkett here for the interview.
Calling up Corey.
Hello.
Corey, have you met everybody here? It was a quick introduction, it's helpful.
Not, not everyone. I don't feel Corey or Steve.
So we'll start down at Beth and give people a chance to introduce themselves.
Hi Corey, Beth Blackwell, Ward four.
Steve Mo, Ward two.
I'm Corey Rodley, she/her pronouns, and I'm in Ward three.
I'm Sean Van Gordon, mayor, and in Ward one.
Michelle Weber, Ward one.
Hey Victor Doyle, Ward five. I had to think about that, that's bad.
Alan Stout, Ward six, that's your ward.
My favorite, my favorite councillor.
My favorite wards, there you go.
All right, are you ready for the questions, Corey?
Yes, sir.
What attracted you to apply for the planning commission?
Several years ago, I was a part of a meeting with various community leaders and there were some other leaders from another community came down and in short, there was just a impactful comment that was made and that was, you know, it's easy to sit there and point out the various issues, you know, in and around your community, county, state. It's another thing to understand that if that's where you live, those are your issues to take ownership. And since then, it really changed my approach to being vested within the community that I'm in. The other thing that I would say kind of watered that seed, if you will, was the opportunity to go through the Leadership Eugene Springfield Program, the joint cohort between Springfield and Eugene Chamber of Commerce, of which, by the way, Neil is a great emcee for an alumni event that we just had. And I seek to be a community member that's vested. My, my community involvement is only deepened my commitment to Springfield and to its future. And I want to be an active contributor to those things that shape, shape policies, shape how we move forward and, and grow within our community. And then my, my current role, I'm the Senior Estimator at LJ Pearson Construction, based right here in Springfield. We are an interior finished carbon contractor mainly on commercial jobs, but we do residential work as well. But I think that's given me just an insight as we work with various general contractors who are the ones that are working more directly with the owner or developer. Just how important it is to have sustainable growth that brings about the economic growth that we, that we all desire to have here in our community.
All right, thank you. Economic development and infrastructure are two major council goals. If you think about how development happens, do you have opinions on how costs should be shared between the developers and the public?
Yeah, I think that developers should, it should reflect a fair partnership between the, the private developers and public stakeholders. I think that developers should carry their share of infrastructure costs, particularly those that are directly related to their projects and to lessen the overall burden on public resources. Think the city should invest public funds in areas that broadly benefit our community, development and infrastructure improvement and create conditions for the kind of economic growth that, that again, that we desire to have here.
If you had a magic wand and you had the ability to change the Springfield Development Code, what would you change?
Well, first, if I had a magic wand, I'd probably get in a lot of trouble with my wife. I think contributing to the efforts in really streamlining or permitting and zoning processes and that encourage business growth, that reduce kind of those boundaries for entry into the opportunity to develop and to improve our housing affordability. I heard it said a long time ago that to be clear is to be kind. Just a quick personal example, and it was not here in Springfield, it was somewhere else where we were renovating a place to bring in a new coffee shop. And at the time, we were told by the city that certain things were required. So we went forth and made those improvements as part of the remodel, only then to find out that when the inspector came out for our CFO, that what we did wasn't actually necessary to the tune of over $40,000, which was a big hit for us as we were trying to get a brand new small business going. So I would hope to contribute to just the clarity in expectations upfront. And always being proactive in, in, in encouraging more of mixed use developments and hopefully fostering those vibrant communities, integrating both the residential, the commercial and recreational spaces.
How would you like to see the city change in the next 10 years? And how do you see the planning commission helping to change the city?
I had the privilege of growing up in the small historic town of Jacksonville, Oregon. And it was my goal to live and die in Jacksonville and eventually become mayor of that great town. Because I loved the quaintness of it. I loved the childhood experience that I got to have. I say all that to say that change can be hard, even when it's good change. And if we want to experience growth, then a number of things I think have to be taken into consideration. Those that have made the investment and the sacrifices in years past to get us to where we are presently here in Springfield. But if we want to continue to grow and, and, and have Springfield be that place where, where development and developers desire to come and for growth to happen, both in the residential and commercial side. I think that those things have to be taken into consideration with being respectful of, of not wanting to see what makes the character of Springfield so great, maintaining that. But also approaching it in a way that, one, that is a good stewardship, that's sustainable and that's beneficial for the whole of our community.
Describe the relationship between the planning commission and the city council and the city staff to the planning commission.
So the planning commission and the city council, the planning commission would serve as an advisory capacity, providing informed recommendations to the city council based on careful study and community input. A productive collaborative relationship is crucial to ensure the alignment of citywide goals that you certainly all have a huge part to play in. Strategic planning decisions and overall community objectives. And for the city staff and the planning commission, the staff provides technical expertise, detailed analysis and essential information that supports the planning commission's decision-making process. And the commission collaborates with staff, ensuring transparent communication and shared commitment through fact-based recommendations for you as the city council.
All right, thank you. That is the last question that I had. We appreciate the time.
Thank you.
So our other applicant has confirmed that he is too busy at this point with his studies. He'd hoped to be able to contribute but has withdrawn his application.
All right, thank you, Sandy. So I'm looking for a head nod. Okay. Then we will address this at, at our other session. Thank you. The next item is transportation funding priorities. Stan. Do you need me to call Drew up for you?
Well, I was planning to have Christie here, but. Good evening, mayor and city council. Stan Petrov, city engineer here. Here to talk about transportation priorities and introduce a framework to guide project selection and funding alignment. Historically, staff have come before council with a list of projects tailored to specific funding sources and sought feedback and approval based on our interpretation of council's priorities while also meeting state and federal planning requirements. However, we recognize that those interpretations may not always fully reflect council's current direction, especially as new members join and perspective and perspectives evolve over time. Our goal this evening is to move toward a more transparent, consistent, objective prioritization process. We're proposing the development of a shared list of transportation priorities in a simple adaptable scoring system that will help staff better align project selection with council direction, maximize funding opportunities and ensure accountability in how we use public resources. For example, we have MPO funding that's coming up currently. It's about five million. We'll talk a little bit more about that later on, but we have a long list of projects and it's only goes so far. So this scoring system would help to align what projects we select with council's objectives. And considering that we also have other priorities, we have TSP, we've got requirements, transportation planning requirements we have to follow and regional priorities. So this would just be one of the priorities in conjunction with other priorities, but it would help us to, to know ahead of time, you know, what your preferences are. So we'll begin with a brief overview of pavement conditions and available funding sources and then just kind of briefly talk about that, just to give us kind of a background and where we're at with that. And then we'll quickly move into the priorities and I want to leave more time to kind of have a back and forth conversation rather than me just talking to you. So if we could put up attachment one, okay, got that. So yeah, overall, we've really been focusing on the yellow streets and preserving those before they get into the red. About 75% of the system is local and 25% is more arterial and collector. And our arterials and collectors are in slightly better shape than the local streets. We have, the PCI is about 69 out of 100. So we're relatively good, but what the, the study that came out in January this year that Ops presented earlier, thinking Ben with Ops presented is that if we keep spending at the current amount, the system's going to slowly deteriorate further and further. We need to spend like another million and a half per year approximately to be able to just kind of stay where we're at. So, you know, instead of fixing some of these local streets, they tend to just get to like a failure state and then they kind of just stay there. They don't get worse than that. They're, they're in a bad condition, but they don't get worse. If we were to spend money on those, they cost so much more to bring up to standards, you have to do stormwater and ADA and rebuild all the way down to subgrade. They're just super expensive. So we tend to focus on keeping them in the, the green and yellow range so that they don't get to that red stage. About 11% of our network falls within the poor, very poor category needing that full reconstruction. Staff continue to focus our preservation efforts on yellow streets. I mentioned that. And it's important to note that backup. So now we could put up the funding sources where I don't have as much background as Christie does, but I'll, I'll try to explain it as good as I can. If we could put up attachment two. Yeah, cool. I can probably keep talking through this while we're waiting for that. So our transportation system is funded through a combination of local, state and federal sources with its own set of limitations and eligible uses. The local gas tax primarily supports low-cost maintenance activities such as slurry seal and crack sealing. It is actually a very small amount of our funding. Local bond funds currently the only source supporting pavement preservation on arterial and collector streets. These funds are restricted to pavement and ADA ramp improvements are essentially for keeping the yellow streets from failing into reconstruction territory. State funds generally, generally limited in scope and typically awarded through one-time grant programs focused on bike and pedestrian improvements. And then federal funds, like the ones I was mentioning for MPO, they represent our most significant source of funding for large-scale reconstruction projects. And Springfield currently anticipates receiving approximately five million, which is about 25% of Lane County share. And that's what we're looking at prioritizing right now. And with those funds, with the previous bond funds being spent, the city is going to soon need to explore new funding mechanisms such as a follow-up bond or preferably a transportation utility fee, a tough to maintain and improve the street network moving forward. So the chart here just kind of shows that. It shows kind of the, the percentage or, you know, relative percentage of how much funding comes from which sources. And the whole point of that is just that certain ones can be spent for certain things. And we have only a limited amount of funding for various projects. And then lastly, if we could put up the last slide, this is the one I really want to focus on. So these were, these priorities were based on previous direction from council, planning efforts, best practice and state and federal requirements, such as the transportation planning rules. They're not listed in port, in order of importance. So it's not like safety is more important. They're really, the way we're proposing is that they're all kind of weighted about the same, although we could change that. The idea is that each project would get like a score. So like, if you're looking at safety projects, we have a bunch of our RFBs, we could go through and score all those different projects based on these different priorities with a one, two or three, like a low, medium, high. And then you total that up and get a total point score for each project and that would help to like rank the, the projects within the different funding sources. It's just super easy. It's similar to what was done with the, the task force, looking at our funding gap and they had kind of a high-low system. It's kind of similar to that. I was kind of excited to see that. It's like, oh, that's similar to what I was thinking. Makes it easy for anybody that's not an engineer that can look at a project and go, yeah, that's a one safety or that's a three safety. Or that's a one economic development or three economic development. So just trying to have a standard process where it's more accountable, it's transparent. The scoring system would provide a clear objective basis for selecting projects while still allowing council direction to elevate or adjust rankings based on community input and strategic, strategic goals. And it's not to override any rules that we have or like the regional priorities. It's really just to get, these are council priorities. So they can be, they don't have to be inclusive of the rules or the other priorities. They can be different. They can be, we can take some away or add them to them. We can also put more preference on certain ones. If there's certain ones of these that we think are less important or more important, we could put like a factor. It just gets more complicated that way. You'd still, I think we'd still have like the one, two, three system, but we could put like a factor of two for a priority that's more important or you know, one for something that's lower and it multiplies by that. It just gets a little more complicated that way. So in adopting this, we're aiming to just improve alignment with council direction, increase transparency, effective leveraging of funding. Funding kind of is closely related to it because we typically pick projects to go to funding. And so the more competitive the projects are, the more likely we're to win the projects. And so that's why also these priorities have been selected is that a lot of these align with other priorities that the state has and the feds have. And so if we use these to pick our projects, then we're more likely to win the funding for the projects because they hit, you know, basically the more bang for the buck you get and the more of those goals you hit, the higher chance of your project to win. So I'll stop talking. I want to say thanks to Victoria for sending some questions ahead of time and I know I didn't address those directly here, but we got the email. And so if you want to talk about some of those, we can, but.
All right, question, councillor Rodley.
Thank you, and thank you for this. I think one of the things that stands out to me on the prior, the priorities list that is missing, at least for me, is like areas around places where there, you know, like schools or shopping centers or places where there's a lot of like transportation wear and tear of all the kinds.
Yeah.
And like, for example, like I'm looking at, and it must be an old map because it has Springfield Middle School on here, kind of where Two Rivers Dos Rios would be. But like between 10th and 7th, where Springfield High School is, there's some really hard streets around there, right? Like there's oranges, there's reds. And I know that this is just outside of the area that we included on the bond on G Street. But I just think about, and granted I have a bias because I drive that all the time, but how much traffic is happening on there of all types. So it's not just cars, but it's kids are walking. There's bumpy sidewalks, there's all the things. So that's a priority that isn't on the list. And I don't know what you would call that, whether it's like very high traffic areas or places where there's a lot of wear and tear that would really, that folks would really be impacted by us doing the work.
Right. I, I think that could kind of be covered under, you know, we tend to focus on collectors and arterials first, and those are slightly better conditioned. That's probably because of that. Also, the low, low income disadvantage tends to be more around schools and, you know, younger and older folks there. But yeah, we could, if we could think of a way to add that priority, but I think it falls under multiple different priorities that are up there.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Councillor Stout?
I have a question and two comments, if that's all right. The question's fast. Do you all have a map of, I saw on the income sources, do you have a map of like which streets are controlled by certain funding sources? For example, we'll say one street is a ODOT street, one street is a, you know, state street. Is that such a thing exists? Or is it just to, is, is the answer to that question a lot more convoluted?
As far as jurisdiction, as far as who owns.
Right, as compared to the funding sources.
Yes, but not necessarily to the funding sources. The funding sources have strings attached that you can only use them for this or that for certain things. So yeah, but we do have as far as jurisdiction, like what's ODOT and what's ours. But within our street system, we just typically use certain funding sources for arterial collectors, certain for local, which there is really almost nothing for the local.
Then, then my two comments are, on the safety side of things, eliminate fatal and serious crashes for all modes of travel. I, I appreciate that safety is at the top of this list, even if the, if, if, how do you call it? Priority prioritization was not intended intentional. I think that I would, I would point out that pedestrians are a mode of travel. Walking is a mode of travel. And I think we can overall, if there is a crash involving a pedestrian, we should treat that pedestrian crash as a central part of what we're doing in terms of our transportation priorities. Something was happening. It's, it's too easy to blame the pedestrian for being inebriated, being impaired, whatever it is. I think our transportation system has to take seriously the role of the pedestrian in it. I think if there's, if it's possible to modify the language, saving, especially pedestrians, I would go for, but I would take including pedestrians. Because I don't think that that language, I don't usually think of my feet as a mode of travel, just, just as a layman. My other comment is just in carbon reduction and active transportation. I love biking, I love improving biking and eliminating one additional car trip. However, the overall, if we can look at our, I, I want us to be paying attention to our overall mode of development such that it reduces the needed number of trips for cars. I, I don't know how to quite phrase that. I think of just adding a, if, if what we're doing can reduce one more car per week per, you know, family, great. You know, whatever that looks like, I think the overall reduction in numbers of trips need to be very helpful. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, I would say that kind of falls into the carbon reduction, active transportation that are, and safety. And so the idea here is just that when you have a list of projects and they're all similar and they all meet all the minimum requirements, it's kind of like the more of these that they hit, those projects will rise to the top. So you're getting kind of more bang for the buck. But yeah, we have transportation planning rules that require looking at active transportation. We're always trying to do that.
Councillor Doyle.
Knew I was going to say something and I was letting everybody else go first.
It's already up.
I, I thought, okay. So thank you. I appreciate it. I'm familiar with TPR and all of that type of stuff as well. And and I know that we have the bond measure that focuses on arterials and collectors. And so my question to you to start this is how open are you guys to a different way of thinking?
I'm always open to.
Okay, because I always hear transportation, people say what you said about the local streets, about their deterioration and the cost to deal with them. I, I get that. But the number one complaint that I'll bet you every councillor on here hears is about neighborhoods with potholes and no sidewalks and what have you. And I think that if you want to really look at what a priority for our community is that would hit on every one of these, just about, it's focusing in on local streets and residential areas. It's going to help with safety because it's going to help. I mean, that's where kids are riding their bikes. That's where people are, you know, in their wheelchairs and trying to get to the buses. And it's not just that, but even when you get down to the economic development side of it, you know, people go in and look at a, at a house and they're like, ah, streets like, you know, gravel or whatever. For the carbon, you know, you're putting in curb and gutter, now you're looking at stormwater. And so you're, you're getting some stormwater conveyance out of that and being able to do some swales and that type of thing to clean it up. I mean, I, I could see how by creating a program that really focuses on those local streets that connect to all those other things, we could hit these things that are necessary. And we could make people feel like we're finally doing something that they're asking us to do. Right? I mean, it's really hard for people to, to understand Harlow Road and the fact that Harlow Road needs to be fixed because they look at it and go, it doesn't look that bad. But they're driving on their local road all the time. And so I wish that there was some way I could get that mentality changed to say these taxpayers and the people that are in these communities that are, they need to see what we're doing and what could we do that would impact that the most and hit the most of these things that you need to hit. So that's what I would like to have you think about.
Okay.
Did you guys want to get into this, come?
See, Victoria, you were looking over here and I was thinking somebody was raising their hand over. I do, I do have a couple of questions here. When I look at the map and that, that's the streets are, the source of this is the street survey we did, what, like last summer? Uh, it was in January, I think is when the report came out, but yeah, it was last summer. Yeah, like this map's amazing, right? To be able to get to that detail. Before I comment on the kind of the prioritization piece, the piece I keep thinking about is we are so grateful to the public for their support of the transportation bonds, right? And you can see the work turn like, you know, if you know where to look on this map. So how do we make it very easy for the public to understand that the, that the votes that they've had on the transportation bond are leading to improvements on the map? And I don't know if that is like, you know, because almost all the miles in blue, right? Those were things that we repaved under the first transportation bond. And when I look across some of these other places, people will see the impact of the second transportation bond as soon as, you know, when it's out there on the street. Yeah, maybe a revised map each, each time our projects are completed with maybe those highlighted or something. Yeah. Yeah. So I just think, yeah, I think you guys can continue to, to think about that. And I like the idea that we're starting with prior, you know, prioritization to sort of help us work through this because the amount of federal dollars that we're talking about really isn't that much, right? We're only going to get one or two projects out of this. Yeah. And that's the thing with the locals is I feel the same way. I think it comes down to funding. We just need more funding because if we were to take the same amount of money we had in the bond, you know, and did more locals, you'd probably get even less miles of street done because it's more expensive per mile. You might get more of a bang from the public as far as, you know, they, especially the people that live in those areas. But then we're looking at letting collectors or arterials deteriorate where everybody uses those, you know, and so.
But isn't the whole point to try to cut down on traffic and driving? Right? So you're like trying to improve the streets that, that people drive on the most. I'm, you know.
And, and I think, and I think more broadly, right, we need to have a specific conversation around the local network. So if I think about this sort of levels and the conversation we're having about transportation, having, you know, a broader question about like, well, what, what are steps that we can adopt or what do we need to do that would make it, you know, start to have the public feel like we've seen an improvement in the local network? Because we hear them. You know, I walk through some of these streets every single day. I see, I've seen them crumble over the years. So I think that's kind of point one is that, you know, I think going, you know, either into the fall or into the winter, when this comes back, you know, having some more policy options on how to go out and identify funding that would help the local streets. And I think councillor Doyle's got an interesting point, which is we don't have to pave all the local streets. There's two or three little sections on there that could be game-changing. There are high abrasion points for the public, right? And even if we, even if we saw, when we scored these, even if we saw a chance to move one or one of those on. So I'm thinking about things like. So I'm thinking about things like 35th, I'm thinking about things like commercial, right? I'm thinking about things like South 52nd Place, right, where all those kids walk to school. I'm thinking about things like that little strip of second to T Street. They're, they're all the groups we know about. Even if we have to sort of care for the broader system, if we can find a way to try to slip, you know, one or two of these in, that would be extremely helpful for the public.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Uh, so Drew Larson, senior transportation planner. So I, I know Stan alluded to this a little bit, but yeah, the funding is, it comes in various forms. Um, our large federal funding, we can typically only use on arterials and collectors. So to address our local network, we rely on the state highway fund of funds that come in, um, that, that are gathered. Hopefully this new legislation package will pass and that split of, uh, 50 going to the state, 30 going to counties, 20 coming to the cities, that our fund will go up a little bit, assuming this transportation package is actually passed. But we do need to find a way locally to be raising funds to really address our local network, unfortunately.
And, okay, so I think that those are two really valid points, right? So one of them is I think we just need to have, like, I think there's a willingness on the council to have a, a conversation around, uh, local streets, right? And a, and a deeper conversation because we hear it, right? Like, we just need to sort of move the ball on that. The second piece is, you know, I don't know what's going to happen with the transportation bill. The one thing I am conscious of is that if it does pass, right? We're really going to have to be thoughtful in, in how we deliver for the public because I don't think the public sees that a state transportation bill actually means dollars, you know, for, for this community in residential streets. So I'm, I'm kind of thinking about that as well. And then I think from a, you know, kind of a third broad strategic bucket is, I don't see how that we will get to the end of this second transportation bond and not be talking about a third one. And I think that's just a reality we have to accept at this point. And I think from, as long as we talk about long-term strategies, we don't have to work out the details to, you know, tonight, but just to think really strategically about the, like the broader system and how to make improvements for, for the community. Because they are very clearly telling us that the quality of the street network is something they're concerned about. And I, and then I did have one other comment about safety, Pete, like the safety data from a, that is a, that is a thing that we still have to find a way to engage with ODOT for. One of the challenges I see with, continue to see with safety data, and I would, you know, be open, you know, as you guys connect with your professional networks to looking for a way that the council can help lobby for that, is the data as it gets back to, to the cities, it just takes too long to, for us to be truly, truly be responsive. And it's not as clear as what we would like it to be. And if, if I think about the system and it's, and it's safety conversation, the biggest single thing that ODOT can do to help safety in the state of Oregon is just get clearer and consistent about data back to the local jurisdictions.
Yeah, ODOT is on about a two-year delay. We are just getting the 2023 crash data, or LCOP just received it. They're processing it, getting it all together for local consumption. So they are on a two-year delay, but yes, it would be nice to get that a little quicker.
Counselor Stout?
Is that, uh, data that you're looking for something that our police department would have locally? And I was just, I was just gonna ask.
So, and I'll leave it to the planners to sort of jump in, like the official dataset comes out of ODOT, right, Drew?
Like, that's my understanding, yes. There is local data, um, and I, I wish Michael Leblanc was here. It's because he's looked, he looked at both of these today, actually. He looked at, at our local source as well compared to the ODOT. Um, but he used the ODOT to get us our numbers from 2023.
I guess my question behind the question is, are we looking for the data in order to secure funding? Or are we looking for the data in order to actually improve the safety of our roads and our transportation as a whole?
Uh, I think it would be both. We would be looking at the, the safety of where we want to prioritize dollars, but then also using that in our grant applications to get awarded funding.
I, I mean, absolutely, like, I love, I like, 100% agree. But I think, I'm just wondering if we're not just sitting on a fair amount of data that we currently have based on the number of crashes that we've had and, you know, any other number of collisions locally. Cause I'm, I'm, I mean, I appreciate what happens on I-5, but I also really think what we're trying to do is localize this conversation and say, hey, what if we took a look at every single, you know, crash that happened within Springfield, just within Springfield, within what we can control? And, uh, and look at, okay, especially with pedestrians, if any case, how can we take care of that locally? Because, you know, I don't have any hope for a transportation package. Maybe it happens, maybe it doesn't happen, but I'm more interested in knowing like, okay, are we handling our own house, is our own house tidied before anything else? So I wouldn't want to wait on the state of Oregon for anything in that regard, except for maybe some money in the future, great.
And then I, another issue is that, you know, I was in a recent car accident and I called and they just heard like, no, can you get out of the road? No, we're not going to show up. And so there's no police reports were created, there's, there's nothing unless the police show up on scene, do a report, we don't have that data. Now we can look at kind of like health data, you know, what are accidents occurring? Um, I, I just spoke with somebody at Peace Health that's putting together some bike ped crash data, but he hasn't gotten that to me yet. But again, that's just bike and ped crash data.
And help, I'm sorry, Counselor Stout interrupted, but like, help me remember here, like, I think the serious and fatal ones have to go through some sort of vetting and, and save them before, right, like it may not be enough just to pull the police reports, right?
Uh, that, that sounds, I, I don't know officially, but that sounds right.
Yeah, and we do have citizen feedback too, I've got quite a bit of that, it's kind of anecdotal, but yeah.
All right, well, we promised a lot of feedback about transportation priorities, so, um, anybody else want to jump in here? Yeah, go ahead.
Quick question, on your scoring system, is that going to be mainly looking at the marginal or is that everything? When you?
As far as like the street conditions, it would be for, so like, if we have a pot of money for arterials and collectors and we were looking at those streets, you know, you would apply this to, to those. If it was somehow we came up more local money for the local streets, then it could be applied to that. It could be basically used for any.
Sorry, and that's something that we would see then at a later date, your scoring system, so to me.
Yeah, that's what I'm proposing is that we kind of as staff come together, we score either individually and then average them, or we work together as a team to score once. We present our list of projects with the score sheets and then you guys could look at it and say, well, I think that safety should be a one there instead of a two and could, you know, could adjust or, and then also, this is just to get us kind of on a general same page with you. It's not like if there was, you know, the levy obviously is very important, we, we just have to do that. So we're not going to score the levy necessarily with all the other projects and it comes out a three and well, I guess we'll wait a few more years. So it's not like, you know, or if there's requirements, there's certain projects that just make more sense for some reason. It's just kind of in general of, you know, rather than us sitting around and just taking our best judgment based on what we think you guys want, and then we come and then you say, well, can you look near your schools and can you do this? And hopefully we get to kind of, you know, easier concurrence between us and, and council in there.
Okay, anybody else? Um, I, is your plan to start with the scoring essentially equal weight among these sort of elements?
Yeah, that's what I was proposing. When you start getting into trying to put one over the other, how do you, you know, put safety over, you know, economic development or something like that? The one, two, three will allow us to kind of have some flexibility in how we weigh them for project. Um, that, that was the proposal.
I'll go ahead, Counselor Stout.
I just want to be really clear, are you proposing that we don't put safety ahead of economic development?
Um, it may get scored higher or lower when you're looking at the projects, but what I'm saying is that, yeah, we could, if, if you feel strongly that one should be really higher than the other, we could put more weight on that to where the one through three gets multiplied by a factor, if, if you understand that.
Got it, I, I just would say, I would say this council would appreciate safety probably being prioritized above, um, many of the other options that we have out there, thank you.
Yes, um, just wanted to follow up on a couple of the questions I heard. I know that operations has a game plan this year for paving some unimproved roads. Those would be without sidewalks, but, um, some of the unimproved roads, slurry seals. And so we can compile that information in a memo and get that to council so you have that, um, when you're having conversations.
And, and it would, I think, I think it would be helpful. And if we, if we add the other projects that are coming out, like I, I think there's a project at South 28th that always seems like it's kicking off.
Hmm, yeah.
Uh, there was a South 28th Street, uh, paving project. It was a dust mitigation, they used a CMAC then, funding, the commes- congestion, yeah, good. Congestion management and air quality and say things, uh, and we did.
You start with the transportation acronyms and suddenly you can't remember anything.
Exactly, it went from South F to, to essentially city limits or UGB, I can't, it's one of the two, but it goes a, across the city limits is what I heard from the crowd.
That one's finished up.
And that one did finish.
Yeah, but stormwater improvements as well.
Yeah, that's perfect. Uh, the only other thing about the priorities that I would just look at is some of these could essentially be, you know, heavily correlated, right? Like, you know, when you look at where our preservation overlay full construction and our dis- our low income populations are, those are all, all maybe the same, same, you know, same grouping. Um, and I would just offer that you, I don't know how many you're going to have to score, but you know, if this list got thinned out a little bit and combined with similar elements, I think that might be helpful.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing with the preservation, that that could just be preservation and then we could weigh the full reconstruct versus overlay inlay as one or three, depending on what our priority is. So if we want to focus more on local, then we could kind of flip it from what we've got to where, you know, a three would be more of a local street and a one might be a preservation, but the problem is the funding. And like going back to the safety, we, we tend to have like funding for safety projects, funding for bike ped. So that's kind of set and then it's really the other factors that kind of would determine, you know, the more of the other priorities that you hit, those projects would raise up versus the one that might hit one or two. So it's not necessarily like we're just picking safety or we're picking, you know, the funding kind of a lot of times dictates that.
Yeah, yeah, I know, it's, there's never enough transportation dollars. And as we wrap up, right, like I just want to acknowledge how far we've come from twen- you know, 2018, right? Like, we still have a long way to go from a street maintenance perspective, but there's been dramatic improvements out there.
Yeah, I'm really encouraged by this new database that we have with the, the scanning tool that we used in AI. It's helped a lot to, it's quite a bit different some places than our older maps, so.
Comments? Thank you, did you get where you needed?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. That was our only item for the work session, we are adjourned to seven o'clock. I'm going to call the Springfield City Council regular session to order with roll call. Mayor Van Gordon, here. Counselor Weber?
Here.
Counselor Mo?
Here.
Counselor Rodley?
Here.
Counselor Blackwell?
Here.
Counselor Doyle?
Here.
Counselor Stout?
Here, thank you.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just for all.
There are two, and there are two times designated for public testimony this evening under public hearings in business from the audience. If you are attending in person, please complete the request to speak card located at the front of the council chambers and turn them into the city recorder. If you're joining us online with a tablet, a smartphone or a computer and wants to speak to either of those items, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. The order of public testimonies is as follows. Anyone in person in the council chambers and then anybody who has raised their virtual hand. First item, please.
First item, we have a really awesome Springfield F-Bed. It's the Professional Land Surveyors of Oregon Surveyor of the Year award, and Jeff is here to talk about that.
Thank you, Neil, thank you, Mayor, Council, Jeff Pascal, Community Development Director. I'm very pleased to share that our city surveyor, Jeremy Scher, has been named the 2024 Oregon Surveyor of the Year. It is a very prestigious honor awarded by the Professional Land Surveyors of Oregon. Inspired by his grandfather, Jeremy began surveying, his surveying career in Springfield over 30 years ago. He joined the city in January of 2023. He's a respected leader in his field, serving in multiple roles with the State Association, several different roles throughout that leadership, including president. And his mentorship and support of emerging professionals reflects his dedication to the profession and our community. Please join me in congratulating Jeremy on this outstanding and well-deserved recognition.
I need to just want to, yeah, come up here, Jeremy. Come up and bring the little guy up here too.
Jeremy, come on.
Yeah, this is the one time I'm allowing props in the city council chambers.
Next item, please.
Next item is the consent calendar.
Mayor? I'd like to, um, I would like to pull item J, the lease approval booth Kelly facility, please.
Okay.
I move approval. I move approval of the consent calendar with item J removed. Second?
What could you hold up, please?
Yes, Counselor Weber?
Yes.
Counselor Mo?
Yes.
Counselor Rodley?
Yes.
Counselor Blackwell?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Aye.
And Counselor Stout?
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, six yeses, uh, zero nos. Next item, I guess it's item J.
J.
Is that me?
Well, I was going to let you dive in if you, you had something pressing or I would summarize kind of where I, some comments, go ahead.
Um, primarily the reason why I pulled this is because of the, um, the method in which it came to us. And I'd just like to try to come up with some sort of an understanding about us being, um, this, if this situation happens in the future, that we be, that the council be notified much earlier in the process. Um, I think that there was, staff did know about this clear back in February and we're not, we weren't hearing about it until a week or two ago. Um, and I'd also like to kind of find out what the process is with the company that we've hired that manages our leases in allowing them to get to the, the place that this one was at. So that's kind of what my concern was, thank you.
Yeah, and I know some of these answers, Ally, it's going to be a takeaway and get back to us. Um, but like with, with the contractor here, I think they've been on with us for a, a year or under. So I think it's just our opportunity to learn more about, learn more about the process. And then kind of clo- like for Michelle and I to talk about how do we close the loop with the rest of the council? So as these issues come up, you know, it's getting, getting back to everybody in a timely manner so it doesn't, so it doesn't feel, feel new. Thank you.
I move to approve item J from the consent calendar.
Second?
Neil, could you hold up, please?
Counselor Weber?
Yes.
Counselor Mo?
Yes.
Counselor Rodley?
Yes.
Counselor Blackwell?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Aye.
And Counselor Stout?
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, six yeses, zero nos. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearings, you have one public hearing this evening, it's master fees and charges update. Jeff Pascal's here for this item.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, good evening, Council, Jeff Pascal, City, uh, or, uh, Community Development Director. Um, tonight, the city council is asked to hold a public hearing on the proposed update to the master fees and charges schedule. Councils reviewed and discussed the proposed fees during a series of work sessions beginning in early April. Um, and that's kind of outlined this, the schedule that we've had in your, um, packet. Um, based on council feedback, a final version of the schedule has been prepared for adoption. A few notable updates often from the red line version that you saw on May 5th to the red line version that's included in your packet tonight. Um, section one, general fees, all of the fees have been rounded up to the nearest dollar, um, as noted by council in the May 5th work session. And then for clarity, one thing to note was the, the red line version you saw last in the May 5th, um, showed the base fee plus the administrative fee for the proposed FY26 fees and only the base fee for FY25, that's been corrected so that you can actually compare the two base fees. So that's why if you were looking, you might notice that the dollar difference is lower. Um, and so now we're kind of comparing apples to apples. Um, section seven, engineering fees, typographical errors have been corrected, those are noted in your packet. And then section eight, planning fees, all of the historical review applications have been adj- have been adjusted to reflect actual cost of service. Um, and with that, the deposit amounts have been reduced accordingly as well with the information we have. And, and as I work with our staff and Mark works with his staff, we're always going to be continually bringing you kind of real-time data that we have as we get better data on what those costs are. And, and as I work with our staff and Mark works with his staff, we're always going to be continually bringing you kind of real time data that we have as we get better data on what those costs are. Also, a new deposit fee has been added for middle housing land division appeals as required by state statute. And these changes now reflected in the final version presented to the council for consideration and adoption this evening, and I'm here for questions before and after.
Questions before I open the hearing. Okay, before I open the hearing, I do want to note that Steve Hopper reached out earlier last week and asked for additional time. And then I granted him six minutes because he had a specific issue that he wanted to share related to this item. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. The first card I have is Steve Hopper, who has six minutes. And state your name just for the record.
Uh, my name's Steve Hopper, three, four, seven, two, six, Matthews Road, Eugene, Oregon, nine, seven, four, five. I gave everybody a packet of information. We can disregard the, the letter. You can read that at your own time. The second page on this is the rate schedule. There is a yellowed area on it that I have added to it because I feel it's very, very necessary for the people that live in Springfield. What it, it, it has to do with is extras and on calls. And currently you start at one yard. So that means if a can is full, it doesn't matter what size can it is, and somebody puts one box, shoebox, a bag, anything, anything that props the lid on the can, then the, uh, the amount to be charged will be a full yard, thirty-one dollars. Now, in the past, Santa Pac never did that, but that is the current policy. I've spoken with them about it. They don't believe they should charge anything less than one yard for any amount of overages. And if you go to the next page, it has pictures on it. The top picture on it is a container that was last month charged. You can see the picture on the container. And that is charged at one yard of overflow for that little bit of propped lid. So that was a thirty-one dollar and eighty cent charge. The reason that this is changed recently is Santa Pac has adopted an AI system. It's brand new. It's, it is highly inaccurate. It doesn't have any human oversight currently. I mean, I know they will say it does, but if you will look at the picture number two, that is a six yard container at an apartment complex, that container was charged six yards of overflow by the AI. The container below it, the third container, has lids that are made to, so people can't get in the containers. You can lock them and you have to push your garbage through. That container was charged at three yards of overflow. Right? If you go to the next container and the next picture, this right here is a recycling container. It's half full. It got two yards of overflow charged by the AI. This goes on and on and on. Below it, you can see the charges. So I referenced everything. Everything that, that I'm talking about is only things I've dealt with personally. I don't know how bad it is for other customers because we look at all of our accounts every month and we order pictures. The next picture, you'll see eight pictures. Out of the eight pictures, seven of them are recycling containers. They were all charged overflows. Not only are they not full, they're not even garbage cans. They're recycling cans. So the AI is having a really hard time figuring out what is what. And human beings can't make these mistakes. Nobody, no human being would say this recycling container has a two yard overflow on it. That just can't possibly happen. So this is, the last page on the list is, is something that was sent to me by Santa Pac, by the previous manager there. And he was working out how many credits I would be getting. If you noticed on there, there are credits for a half yard, three quarters of a yard, quarter yard. So we were doing that up till just recently. We're no longer doing that. Now it's being charged at one yard. And the reason you can do that is because you're about to approve a rate schedule that does not allow for less than one yard. You're telling them they cannot charge for less than one yard. You shouldn't be doing that because that's not fair to the people that are being charged. It's like a license to steal. And I know you're not intending to do that. It's just what it ends up being. And it's very simple fix. Um, I was spoke, I spoke to Jeff earlier. He said that because I didn't get here early enough, even though I was here for your work session, I wasn't allowed to speak. I did drop some information by. But then when I found this information, I just wanted to make that very clear to you guys that you're the last stop in this. You're the ones who can make this change. It's a simple change. A quarter yard, a half yard, three quarters of a yard. It doesn't hurt anybody and it, then it doesn't cheat anybody. And I know everybody's not trying to cheat people, but it does allow the, the rates to be correct. The second thing is that when, um, when, um, you read the Santa Pac terms and conditions, which is on this page that has the two lights, I mean, things on there. At the bottom, you'll read Santa Pac terms and conditions. Highlighted is there is the sentence, if no error is reported within thirty days, this account will be considered correct. So if you don't discover that you've been overcharged or charged for something that's not even yours, you will not be allowed to contest it. It's in the terms and conditions. So it's a thirty day window imposed by Santa Pac on the citizens. And it's them having the problems of overcharging or charging incorrectly. It's not the citizens doing that. And if you don't, if you have your garbage bill set to auto pay, which a lot of people do. I mean, the more we're all used to credit cards and everything, we just set everything up on auto pay. Because you don't expect you're going to get a charge that you shouldn't actually, actually pay. Um, on that same page with the, with the terms and conditions, you can see that there was a nine yard overcharge, nine yards of overflow. Then the next month, it was all credited back. None of it was real. It was the AI.
Chimes up. So, Aaron.
Questions or no?
No, we, we're. I have you marked down for, for business from the audience. Did you want to, is this the item you wanted to speak to? Okay, come on, come on up. Aaron Donnelly.
Hello, Counsel. Uh, my name is Aaron Donnelly. I'm with Santa Pac. And, um, so first of all, I just want to say I don't really disagree with, you know, you know, a lot of the statements that Steve just said, and, and frankly, I, I don't like us ever charging anybody incorrectly for anything. So the, the little background and context on it, um, we, we've always charged for extras and overflow. It's always been on the rate system. It's, it's a way to prevent litter and vectors and overspill. It's also a way to, it helps if it's not an overflowing dumpster, that typically causes contamination and other issues with recycling. And then there's just the issue of equity in the rates, whereas people are, should be paying for, you know, what services they have. And if there's overflow, that's above the services that they're, they have. But, uh, we did implement, um, I know it's called AI, you know, camera system, but basically it was always either the driver riding up the overflow or the driver getting out of the truck and taking a picture with a tablet. And that took extra time and idle time on the trucks. The cameras now, um, recognize, uh, the lip of the container and they recognize if there's material above that lip. Then if it does that, the camera will then email, um, or send a message to our dispatcher. And so the, the dispatcher or a person at Santa Pac has always looked at the picture, uh, before charging for it. So it's never been a, there's no, it's, it's really no different other than the driver was charging the extra. And now it's a dispatcher looking at the photo, charging the extra, uh, based on the information that they're seeing. Now, with that said, if you see a photo that doesn't, that got charged, it shouldn't have been charged, then that's, that's not correct. And we had some glitches when we were starting the program and miscommunications with the dispatcher that was supposed to be charging these issues. And so they did not correctly charge, um, on, on some overflows. And we have been working with those customers and, and, um, uh, with Steve as well. I hope, I hope to credit back anything that's been incorrect. And I've, I've told them now to go back and we're, we're going to be looking at every single photo since we started the program and reviewing it and issuing credits if it's even questionable, um, so that we feel like everybody's, you know, comfortable with, with the software and with the program. And again, moving forward, uh, we've had, uh, you know, internal training, uh, lessons, uh, for our dispatchers and customer service team to say, this is when it's overflow. This is when it's not. Um, and we've told them to err on the side of not charging if it's close. Um, and so I really hope to, to have all this issue resolved, uh, and then moving forward in the future. And I'm happy to talk to any customer and, and get them resolved as well and issue credits, whatever we need to do. So, um, I, I apologize, uh, you know, for the mistakes that have happened. I don't, I don't disregard them at all. So we're just, we're just going to fix it moving forward and go back to any, anyone that had any of those extras and fix those as well. So.
Thank you. Um, we, hang on, Aaron, we may have some questions for you. Mayor Bridgen, we may have some questions for Aaron here. Do you want me to close the hearing and then ask those questions? Did you want me to leave it open?
Yeah, I think I would, if you have any other cards to take that testimony in, then close the hearing and then you can ask, um, Aaron, your questions.
Okay. I don't have any other cards for this item, Neil. Do you have anybody online?
No hands online for this.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Did anybody, uh, Counsel Rodley?
Thank you, and I appreciate the, the conversation, um, about this. The one thing that Mr. Hopper mentioned was that, um, it's now a minimum of one yard and it no longer able to do like a quarter or a half or a yard or whatever. And so I'm cur- I'm just curious about that because one yard is a lot. And when you've just got a little bit extra. So I'm just curious about the sort of where, what, where that's at.
Yeah, um, I think at this point, the, you know, the rates as they stand in the packet tonight say, you know, one yard like they've always said. But we're open to discussion with, with city staff to figure out other solutions. If that's something that's the city council that wants us to change up, I want to do it so it's most accurate for the customers and it must equitable for the customers. So we're open to any of those discussions. And if we need to change that up, we can, we can do that. And we're open to changing that up, uh, you know, before the next annual rate review. So don't, we don't have to wait a year. Um, so if that's something that the council wants to strike us to look into, we're happy to do that. And also I don't know, I know that the thirty day notice thing, I think that's always been on there, but I might be wrong. And I don't know if we hold people to that. I, you know, I'm not directly day to day inside Santa Pac right now every day. And so this is actually a little newer to me and I'm dedicated to fixing this issue completely. But my, my guidance to them is to have grace and give credits and not, not be so, you know, not be picky essentially to, to, to work with customers, so.
All right. Other questions? Go ahead, Counsel Doyle.
Has there been some issues with, um, people kind of taking advantage of that and like putting way more than they should? Because I know you, you know, you, you guys get charged that as well. Has that been an issue that you've seen? I know in my neighborhood, I see people like stacking up their garbage can and I'm like, man, you guys, come on.
Yeah, you know, it happens both ways. You know, it does. Um, sometimes people don't have a full dumpster either, you know, so it, it does happen though. And that's, you know, the goal of this is to get people right sized so that they can understand their total waste volume, understand what they're throwing away and not have litter and to move on. Um, but yeah, I'm sure it happens both ways.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I also, I understand the note on the bill as well because the, I totally agree with Steve that we do stuff on auto pay, but the reality is we do have some responsibility. And if I, if I have an auto pay that's twenty-five dollars a month and suddenly it's thirty-seven fifty, I'm going to notice that. And if you don't, unfortunately, that's kind of on you. But I'm glad that you're willing to work with people if they, you know, see that it's a consistent thing. But if they come back six months later, I'm, I, I, I understand the company's policy on that, so.
So, um, I think that I've got two questions here. One of them is when I look at the material that, uh, Mr. Hopper submitted, the last date where they have a reimbursement is February twenty-five. And when I listen to your testimony, you're saying, hey, that as far as you understand, the issue's been corrected. So is, is the time between February twenty-five and up to date i- in Santa Pac's opinion, has, has this issue been corrected?
I believe it's corrected now, but I think there was probably errors after February. And I don't know if there's any outstanding, uh, with Steve right now, but I'd be happy to look into those as well. But I think everything that we're dealing with now is current to the previous month. But yeah, we started this program in November. And so we're going back to then, or October, whenever we started the, the cameras. So we're going to go back to that date to look at all the photos as well.
And by going back to that date, you don't mean just with Mr. Hopper's work? You mean, what you mean with everybody's? And do, do you have a level of sense of like how broad the airs are out in the community? Or you just know that there's more than just Mr. Hopper out there and you guys are going to reconcile them?
Yeah, I, I honestly don't know. Um, I, I believe there's obviously more than Mr. Hopper and we'll, we'll take care of him, but I just don't know that, that number.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did folks have more questions? Oh, Counsel Stout.
I just want to make sure we set a date for reminding ourselves, maybe in the fall sometime to make sure we review this, this.
Sure.
Issue.
Yeah. I'd be happy to come back and explain to you what we've done to take care of it and that kind of thing as well.
Yeah, um, that, great suggestion, Counsel Stout. Um, I don't think we have other questions for you. Thank you, Aaron. I think in Neil, I think there's two points that, and maybe you, the staff can go back and talk to Santa Pac about. I don't know if having more, you know, more yardage options is helpful or not. I would be interested in you guys having a conversation to say, okay, if that's just going to more broadly help us as a community, I will, I would need, I would need more information about it. The other one, I think the staff, as staff, we got to follow up on is the, the, this question about, hey, what is the level of repayments that we, that we've gotten and just sort of close that issue? It sounds like Santa Pac is committed to resolving, resolving this. Um, but I, we, we just need to find some sort of closure with it.
Yeah, we can get those answers and also put a reminder for a fall, um, review.
Yep. Yep. All right. Thank you.
I move to adopt a resolution amending master fees and charges scheduled chapters one through ten with an effective date of July one, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Mo.
Yes.
Counsel Rodley.
Yes.
Counsel Blackwell.
Yes.
Counsel Doyle.
Aye.
And Counsel Stout.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, six yeses, zero noes. Next item, please.
And next item is business from the audience.
All right, I've got quite a few cards. I'm, I'm going to try calling you up two at a time here and take advantage of both microphones. You'll have three minutes to talk to the, uh, talk to the council separately. We're not gonna, not at the same time. So the first, the first two, uh, names are James, uh, Lawny, Lawny Deere and Bob Foster. And it's James first and then Bob. Uh, yes, please.
James Lawinger, nineteen fifty, South Fifty-seventh Street, Kirkland, nine, eight, oh, nine, nine, seven, eight, seven, four. I might be, I'm, I'm new here. Okay. And that's what I wanted to talk to you about. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm here tonight as a new resident of Springfield and as a volunteer page at the Springfield Public Library. Prior to this, I served twelve years as both page and library technical assistant at the King County Library System in King County, Washington, often serving as a substitute at twenty-eight of our fifty county, countywide locations. All of these locations were in small rural communities, Duval, Eninclaw, Kent, Newcastle, Snoqualmie, and all were the foundation, the bellwether institutions of the community culture and support communities like Springfield. I see libraries such as ours in Springfield as examples of pure American democracy, where all enter our doors as equals, finding informed, dedicated staff with answers to their needs. And critically, the library is a prime place for simply belonging, a seriously required need for our growing diverse community today. I want you to know that the Springfield Library ranks up with those that I worked with at King County Libraries as a well-run, highly functioning institution, serving community, committed and disciplined to reading, learning and responding to all the challenges facing Springfield daily. That is the story of public libraries today, and Springfield is not just book-lined shelves, but patrons and families researching jobs, technology needs, or just watching movies and using our free wifi. Every day, I reshelve books on government and adult democracy, how-to books from cooking, gardening to mechanics. Every day I see dedicated families and children. Every day, I see dedicated families and children engaged in storytimes and learning to read books with the involvement of both parents. So when you speak of your future desires for economic development, downtown revival, think of the library as part of your mission to success. You write on page 14 of the task force report that Springfield is a working town, a family town, and like the towns I knew in King County, is a town dependent upon a highly functioning library. So keep in mind the importance of our library and our growing community and plan to enhance our library and to act to strengthen it, not weaken it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Right, Bob, you've got to hit the unmute button until it turns green. There you go, you're up.
I'm Bob Foster, 2284 Clearview Lane here in Springfield. For the last 21 years, I've been shelving books at Springfield Library. I love to do it and I'm good at it. And I work about an hour a day, maybe over 200 days a year. I would hate to see the library cut and lose more hours, like the last time, they lost about four or five hours. And it's harder for me to go and work because it's closed. But I'm hearing from certain people that in, in the fall, you'll have a session about the library and stuff like that, but I'm concerned that, like what happened to Eugene, they were about to close certain days, they didn't because enough people came forth and got the city to change that. But I know you're, you've got a shortfall of a couple million dollars and maybe you're going to cut 500,000 out of the library, but I, I hope that doesn't happen. I really feel that the library is very important, not just to me, but to all the other people that really need the library and spend a lot of time there. And I hope there's some other way to come up with a shortfall rather than taking it out of the library. I really feel that it would hurt this community if you cut it, cut it back anymore than it's already been cut. Maybe we can fundraise or maybe I'll have to start paying more money to keep the library open, but I, I don't really want to see it closed for any more hours. That's the way I feel. And that's about all I can say. Other than for Santa Pac, I don't think they've ever said anything about how much more they're charging for just a little bit above. I mean, I, I see people with boxes and it's piled high, but I've never been sent a letter saying, oh, we're going to charge you this much more for, you know, that, that's something they need to put in their letters to you every month when you get your, your statement. Maybe they've done that, but I, and I didn't read it, but that's, that's just a suggestion to Santa Pac.
All right, thank you. Thank you, both of you.
Yep.
The next two folks are Betty Olgin and Kami Romig.
Betty Gorak Yolgin, 407 C Street. I'm a nurse practitioner at Willamette Valley Cancer Institute. For four, for 20 years, I've helped patients and their caregivers navigate a very challenging period of their lives. Six years ago, I joined the Springfield Public Library Foundation. I joined the foundation because our library provides upstream interventions which promote health and safety. Regarding health, literacy and health are interconnected. Up to 40% of American adults have fair to poor literacy skills. Limited literacy is a barrier to accessing health information, proper medication use and utilization of preventative services. Research shows a positive correlation between limited literacy skills and chronic conditions, including diabetes and cancer. Those with underdeveloped reading skills often incur additional healthcare costs due to lack of comprehension of medical instructions and/or late interventions for medical conditions. Library, early literacy and lifelong learning services contribute to better health outcomes. Regarding safety, low literacy skills are one of the greatest common factors for incarcerated individuals. 85% of juveniles and 60% of adults within our criminal justice system are functionally illiterate. Moreover, those individuals who are still illiterate after serving their sentence have a high probability of reoffending, re-entering the criminal justice system. Without a basic level of literacy, criminal activities become more probable means of financial survival. Library, early literacy and lifelong learning services contribute to a safer community. Our city is facing a financial shortfall like many cities in Oregon. The task force has recommended a 22% cut to the library budget. Reducing the library services will have downstream costs for healthcare, law enforcement and workforce development. If any city can come up with an innovative, common sense plan to address financial shortfall, it's Springfield. I was encouraged by Counsel Doyle's questions if the payroll tax had parity with other cities, by Counsel Stout's queries about a vacancy tax, and by the innovative list of options to raise revenue in the task force report. When presenting their recommendation, one task force member said the city needs to make a cut to demonstrate they are sharing the pain. The pain from a library budget cut will be experienced by the more vulnerable Springfield residents and those of us in the trenches of healthcare and law enforcement. Thank you in advance for exploring options to raise revenue to fund our library.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kami Romig, 707 South Fourth Street in Springfield. I've lived in Springfield for more than 30 years. I work in the library at my, in my neighborhood elementary school, Two Rivers Dos Rios, and I've been president of the Friends of the Springfield Public Library for the past 10 or so years. I'm here today to show my support for the Springfield Public Library. I know you are facing some difficult decisions, but I urge you to avoid such a drastic cut as the $500,000 recommended by the task force. As you know, every student in the Springfield School District is eligible for a free library card. Many visit the library with their families and because my school is so close, our first graders walk there for a field trip each year. In the summer, they can get a free lunch on the plaza from food for Lane County, then attend one of the library's events in the summer concert series. It's an important part of our city, a place to foster a love of reading, of learning and so much more. I think libraries are the heart of our communities. The proposed cuts will lead to less, fewer hours, reduced staff, less programming to engage the youngest members of our community. There's been mention of a library levy, but no details of when or how it would happen or whether it is a reliable source of funding. Now more than ever, it's important to have a library that is thriving. It's an investment to the future, not, not only for our kids, but for the city. During my years in Springfield, I've seen us, the city transform itself with the aid of leaders like you. Please help us maintain a library that is a reflection of that success. Thanks again for your time.
Thank you. Next two cards are Elliot Harwell and Cherish Bradshaw.
Hello, I'm Cherish Bradshaw. I live in Ward Three, Counselor Rodley's Ward. I'm here to speak on behalf of the library. I know that money is tough to find right now. I know that the city statewide, due to property tax issues are, have budget issues, but I would, I would prefer that the library's budget not be cut. I know it's hard to find the money other places, but a quarter of the budget is quite a lot. I love our Springfield Library. As a young girl, I didn't live in Springfield, but my fondest memories of my hometown are spending countless hours in the library, just those quiet, you know, that sense you are, you get in a library where it's so quiet and there's like a denseness, like sound is muffled by all the books. I spent hours in my library reading every, researching every topic under the sun from like Guinea pigs to reading Albert Payson or Hoon books, the lad, the dog books. And they're some of my fondest memories of the child, as a child. My library had like a limit of how many books you could check out, but I got to know my local librarian and she expanded that limit so I could check out more books at a time. I'd have a tote bag full and I'd, I'd come back every week or two and replace them. And I just want that opportunity for all the local kids. Literacy is extremely important. You, you might know this, but one of the, the factors you can look at, the average third grade literacy rate in a place and 20 years from then, tie that to incarceration rates. So literacy is incredibly important and I would love to see our library not cut and in fact, further funded and expanded if there is a levy or a fee that can be assessed. I'm all for that and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Elliot Harwell. I also live in Ward Three, Corey Rodley's district. I'm also here to speak about, about the library. I'm originally from Texas, but public libraries are everywhere in the United States. They're a valuable institution in our republic and in our society. My fondest memory as a kid was going to the summer, to the, to library in the summer with the really nice air conditioning. There's a carousel there of choose your own adventure books. And I think over the course of two or three summers, I read every single one my library had to offer, which is a lot considering that the whole point of a choose your own adventure book is that they have different ends. One thing that was important that I only later understood was that librarians and school teachers talk about the summer slide. And that is over the course of the three months that kids are out of school, they lose their level of literacy. And so in places where summer reading programs aren't offered, you have a cumulative growth year in and year out of decreasing literacy compared to areas where the library is open and able to provide services year round. Libraries are an excellent place for people to research, to learn new things about themselves and about their world. I really like going to the library here and learning, getting out books on, on cinema history. I'm, you know, it's, it's kind of difficult to buy your own books these days. It's also a place that you can print things, you can have internet for free. Of course, it's not free. It's, it's a public good. It's something that our taxes pay for. People are willing and able to pay a little bit more in taxes or see where their taxes go to keep the library open. It's something that benefits every single member of the community. It benefits us now in the present and it benefits our children and our children's children into the future. It's difficult to put a price tag on that, but the fact of the matter is, is that we live in a world where we have to put price tags on everything. And my understanding is we're $500,000 short in the budget. And I would urge the city council to find a way to raise revenue or to take money from elsewhere because the library is one of the most critical things that we can have in our city. And it is in many respects, more the heart of the city than Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you. The next one I have is Antonio Huerta.
Good evening, my name is Antonio Huerta, address 485 Winston Place in Springfield. I'm here as the founder and director of Comunidad Ierense Cultural based here in Springfield. Over the years, Comunidad Ierense Cultural has partnered with the Springfield Public Library and the Springfield Museum to create programs that reflect, uplift and serve our diverse community. These collaborations have strengthened not just our organizations, but the fabric of Springfield itself, offering meaningful culturally relevant opportunities to residents across the city and in neighboring communities. The Springfield Public Library in particular serves as one of the most trusted and accessible touchpoints for many families of our, in our community. For countless residents, the library is a welcoming gateway to civic life, education and connection. It plays a vital role in bridging communities and building trust. Our organization is proud to contribute to these efforts through our events such as Dia de los Niños, Dia de los Libros, the summer programming at the Plaza, Noche Cultural, Hispanic Heritage and Dia de los Muertos. As some of you might know, most recently, in partnership with the library and Guy Lee Elementary School, we co-hosted our Dia de los Niños, Dia de los Libros event, a joyful celebration of literacy, language and culture. Looking ahead, we look forward to continue this part of our work through the summer reading programming on the plaza. We also look forward to hosting both the library and the museum at our annual Noche Cultural event and Hispanic Heritage events in downtown and at Guy Lee Elementary School. These celebrations draw families and community members from throughout the region. As city, school districts and other institutions grapple with the current financial challenges, I encourage you not to lose track of these partnerships. They demonstrate what is possible when public institutions and community-based organizations work hand in hand. We remain committed to this collaboration and to the sheer goal of building a vibrant, connected Springfield for all its residents. And we hope that you find alternative funding so that the level remains at its capacity. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last card I have. Neil, could you verify that we don't have anybody online?
No hands online for this item.
Okay, was there any counsel response? Counsel Rodley?
Thank you. I just want to thank everyone for coming out and sharing tonight. We often hear from people when they're very crabby about things and I will say that hearing from you all about what you love about Springfield and why you live here and what inspires you to give back has been wonderful. So I just want to thank you all for taking the time on a Monday night to come out and share. Thank you.
Counsel Doyle?
So I too want to thank you. I appreciate it. And I, I, it's obvious the passion that people have here and you're not telling us anything that we don't know about how wonderful the library is, right? But there's a few things that I wanted to comment on that were said because one of the big issues has been about literacy and how important libraries are to literacy. And if that's true, if we're going to talk statistics, then I looked up the Oregon Department of Education and in 2010, the city of Springfield was at about a 78% proficiency rate with reading. In '24, we're at 35%. So our literacy has reduced by 43%, yet we have a library. So that's a problem in our community. And even though it was a little higher around Thurston, it was around 19% at Springfield High School. To me, that's terrifying. I, I don't see what we're doing to make it better when it's continued to go down and down and down. So I'm not saying I have an answer, but I'm just saying that if you're going to tell me that the library is part of that, then why are our numbers so dramatically down? It's, it's crazy. And then you had said something about people are willing to pay for a library and that's great. That's what a levy is. That's what a bond is. You put it out there and if people have as much passion about it as you, then they're going to support it. And that's what they do. They support it with their dollars. But right now, we're not $500,000 down. We're millions of dollars down and it's going to continue to get worse over the next four years. So we have looked everywhere. We hired, had a task force come in, volunteers just like us. They spent months, they went through everything. This is what they came up with. And for everyone that came up here, not one of you offered something that you think should be given up besides the library. I understand you don't want the library to be given up. Give me an alternative. I'm willing to hear it, but I'm telling you that our hands are tied and we're doing the best we can, but you just can't make something out of nothing. So I, I just know that we're, we understand and we hear you. These are tough decisions, so.
Great, thank you. I wanted to offer my thanks to everybody coming out and acknowledge that this is, this is. Great, thank you. I wanted to offer my thanks to everybody coming out and acknowledge that this is, this is difficult. And you know, I know that the support, you know, of the library is across this, across this community. The, the thing I would just offer is that this is the very, very early part of this conversation, like the very earliest part. And we're working our way through the task force report, which I would describe as changing a report into what our actual strategy is going to be. That's not to say that your input's not valuable because it is valuable, but it's going to take us a couple of conversations before we clearly get to a place where the council is saying its strategy is going forward. And it's probably going to take us into, into the fall. So when you think about the timeline, this, this thing is not going to get settled by the 30th of June. There's just too many conversations to have. So I want to make sure I'm clear on that. Is just please be patient. Please keep, you know, providing public comment. We'll be looking for another place to take specific public comment on that, on that report. The other thing that, that I think is very, very valuable to point out is that it is more, yeah, it is more than $500,000. And we're trying to find the right balance between, between them. So your, your inputs appreciated. It's still really, it's still really early on and we still have to weigh a lot of material and have a lot of conversations about it. So please just keep engaged with it. Thank you. Next item, please.
Mayor, the next item is ordinances. Ordinance number one is a vertical housing development zone termination. This is an ordinance terminating the vertical housing development zone approved April 12th, 2004, adopting a severability clause and providing an effective date. This is a first reading only, so no action is required. Katie Carroll is here for this item.
All right. Good evening, mayor and council. Katie Carroll, Housing Analyst for the city. So this is a first reading of an ordinance to terminate Springfield's vertical housing development zone, which is located in downtown. The vertical housing development zone was designated by the state at the city's request in 2004. And it allows for property owners within that zone to apply for vertical housing tax exemptions, which is a 10-year partial property tax exemption to incentivize vertical housing development. Only one property, the Royal Building, received this, was granted this tax exemption before state law changed in 2017 and turned over administration of the program to the city. Around that same time, the council started having discussions about adopting the Housing Diversity Tax Exemption, or HDTE, to incentivize multiple unit housing in transit served and core areas. In 2020, the council reviewed a comparison of the vertical housing tax exemption and the HDTE. And it determined that it preferred the HDTE, so it directed staff to replace the vertical housing tax exemption with the HDTE in downtown. The council began the adoption process for the HDTE last spring. That adopting ordinance included language to repeal the vertical housing tax exemption. Sorry, the vertical housing development zone. After the first reading of that ordinance, the city received an application for a vertical housing tax exemption for 448 Main Street or the Rivet Building. And so council directed staff to remove the language that would have terminated the vertical housing development zone to allow time for the city to process that application. The council then approved the Rivet Building's application for a vertical housing tax exemption on July 1st, 2024 via a resolution. And the city subsequently has certified that exemption to the county assessor this year in March after the applicant completed some outstanding steps. And so now that that exemption has been applied, the council can move forward with terminating the vertical housing development zone without impacting any approved tax exemptions. And then one aside, just because I mentioned the housing diversity tax exemption, we have gotten and approved the first application for that new tax exemption. It's going to be a 35-unit apartment building in the Q Street area. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions? All right. This is first reading only. No action tonight. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item under resolutions is acceptance of project P41049, West D Street Network Improvements. This is resolution number one, a resolution accepting public improvements of the West D Street Network Improvements Project, P41049. Amanda Clinton and Christie Krueger are here for this item.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Amanda Clinton, Senior Contracts Analyst here. And so sorry. That better. Okay. Senior Contracts Analyst in DPW. I'm here for final acceptance and resolution of the West D project. It's part of the last IGA for walk biking safety and funding, which is federally funded. PACX has finished all the work on the project. It's been inspected by ODOT. And we're ready for project acceptance. And Christie is here to explain more.
Christie Krueger, Capital Engineering Manager at the City of Springfield. As Amanda mentioned, this is part of a bigger overall package that we received years ago, walking biking safety improvements project or package. And this is the final project, which is exciting, the West E Street project. So for decades and decades, there have been concerns with West E Street, the safety of the bicyclists, the cars, the pedestrians with all the modes intermingling. So as part of this safety priority project, we were able to install four speed humps relatively spaced evenly apart. This was, sorry, I should go back. It's from Mill Street to River Hills Drive. So four speed humps, we did a raised crosswalk at the park right there on the east end. And then we adjusted the riverfront path connection, that transition right there, because there were sight distance issues. So we realigned that. And then we also created a new bike transition on the west end of the project. So now bicyclists can come off the riverfront path, go onto the street and then access that way. Or if they are going westbound, they can stay in the roadway and get into an exclusive bike left turn lane and get onto the bike path. So they don't have to intermingle with the pedestrians that are on the sidewalk at that location. We also did some ADA ramp improvements as well. So the contractor is finished. And so that's why we're here tonight to accept the project.
Counselor Stone?
I just want to say I've ridden on this path, this improved, fully finished improvement so many times, and I absolutely love it. That's all.
Great.
Counselor Moore?
I'd been pushing that project for quite a while quietly. And I think you know that. A couple of years ago, one of the counselors suggested that we pull it. I said, no, and he didn't. And so you still, now you have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? All right.
I move to adopt resolution number one.
Second.
Could you call the vote, please?
Counsel Weber?
Yes.
Counselor Mo?
Yes.
Counselor Rodley?
Yes.
Counselor Blackwell?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Aye.
And Counselor Stout?
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, six yeses, zero noes. Next item, please.
The next item is resolution number two. It's a city initiated street annexation segments of Laura Street, Aspen Street and Menlo Loop Public Right-of-Way. This is resolution number two, a resolution to initiate annexation of three public rights of way, right-of-way only identified as Aspen Street from Centennial Boulevard to 1380 Aspen Street, including that portion of Menlo Loop that extends easterly beyond Tamarack Street to 1320 Menlo Loop and Laura Street from 2145 Laura Street to 2320 Laura Street. And Tom Severs is here for this item.
Did put together two slides for this just for some visuals. We'll see if we can get that up real quick. And there's just two. I'll just, yeah, perfect. Good evening, mayor and city councillors. I'm Tom Severs, Senior Planner in the current planning section. Council has requested to adopt a resolution to initiate the annexation of three city street segments, including Aspen Street, Menlo Loop and Laura Street. The city council is authorized by section 5.7.125 of the Springfield Development Code to initiate the annexation of contiguous property to the city limits of Springfield. The property proposed to be annexed includes an approximately 950-foot segment of Aspen Street right-of-way, beginning at Centennial Boulevard and running to the easterly end of Menlo Loop as seen here in this visual. This location also includes a 150-foot segment of Menlo Loop, located between Aspen Street and the intersection of Tamarack. It extends just beyond Tamarack to the northern section of Aspen there. The final area, next slide, please. The final area includes an approximately 1,412-foot segment of mid-block Laura Street as seen here. The proposed annexation areas contain right-of-way only. No private property is involved in this request. The city agreed to annex these segments pursuant to an intergovernmental agreement for jurisdictional transfer from Lane County to facilitate capital improvement projects of the roadways. Upon initiation, staff will produce the required annexation recommendations and will hold a subsequent public hearing at a future date. Thank you for your time and I'm here for any questions.
Are there any questions? Counselor Rodley?
Thank you. I do not have a question. I just appreciate this. Because I know particularly Aspen Street, and I think the section of Laura Street as well, because they've been county roads and there's just been because I've been part of those conversations too. There's been challenges with folks wanting us to do repairs and we have to figure out who's responsible and all of that. So even though it's more stuff for us to take care of, I think it makes sense to people because they expect it to be the city. And so I appreciate that we are here. So thank you.
I've got a couple of questions. When we talk about the Aspen Street, when is that project meant to kick off, right, with the school there? Oh, I see Christie tagging herself in.
She'll better answer that one, absolutely.
So the Aspen Street project is part of the bond package. So we have started design. We're looking at the 60% design right now. So we're trying to move as quick as possible with the whole entire bond package, but we're, we're on track. So we're hoping to get our projects out to construction 26, 27. So.
Everybody's going to be really excited to see that one and about five other bond projects. And, and I'm assuming that one's going to get, try to get time to do over the summer when school's out.
That's the goal. Yes. We're not only going to be repaving it, but we're also going to put in a wastewater line so that the adjacent property owners can connect in the future if they would like to.
Yeah, that, that's great news, right? Taking advantage of the fact we're doing work out there is always good fiscal stewards. The two questions I had with Laura is, I think there's technically two projects there. The one to the north is a county-driven project and that road has needed it for a long time. What's the timeline on our portion? Don't we, isn't that?
It's a combined project, so design is done and construction has started. So it's all one, it's bid as one package.
Outstanding, because I've got about four neighbors who keep asking me about it. And lastly, are we burying the utility lines there? Okay, so may, maybe I'll make the comment that, you know, back for our partners from the utility board. That would be something like as we're making more and more investments in, in our streets, especially these bigger ticket repairs, that would be a conversation that I think would be helpful for the community is to take advantage. Because a utility pole that is underground can't fall down in an ice storm. So, but I see Board Director Weber back there and I'm sure he'll catch me later about that one. Go ahead.
When we have new development, aren't they required to put stuff underground?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess that in theory, right, and I, I know we're getting sidetracked here, so I'll reel us back in. I, that is a requirement that we control.
For new projects, let's say, or reconstruction projects, they're, in the code, it does allow for them to stay above ground in certain circumstances. So it is code language.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I guess, I guess the place I really noticed it was working through that Mill Street. I mean, we've, that is a, a game changer and you know, like, it would have been probably helpful from an economic development perspective to take care of them. Okay, I'm going to get us back on track. Thanks, Christie, for answering my questions. Anybody else with other questions? All right.
I move to adopt resolution number two.
Second.
Well, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Counsel Weber?
Yes.
Counselor Mo?
Yes.
Counselor Rodley?
Yes.
Counselor Blackwell?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Aye.
And Counselor Stout?
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, six yeses, zero noes. Next item, please.
Uh, next item is business from the city council. It's a planning commission appointment. And before we bring Sandy up, I want to just let the council know the city manager's office received a planning commission application within the proper timeframe that we did not process properly. This was not a mistake of the applicant. It was our office. So if the council is open to interview this applicant, we have a process to move it forward. If you'd like to hear about that.
I think we would be open to hearing about that and waiting on the appointment until we can interview the other applicant since it was not their error.
It was not theirs. It was our error. So that would mean that council could interview the applicant during the June 9th work session. We could set a 15-minute timeframe for that and then they would be able to appoint on June 16th during a regular session.
Yeah, let's, let's go ahead and do that.
Okay, our apologies for that. Easiest item you've had all month. Any other business from the council?
Does anybody have other business? I do want to call out one, one item that is on our schedule. You're going to start to see a special regular session show up for June 23rd. I just want you to be aware of it. The 16th meeting is so large that one of the asks that we had a staff was to sort of, we had extra time, the 23rd was to break some of those items back out. So we didn't have a thousand-page, you know, a packet. It's still going to be big. But they went through and they looked for other items that could successfully be moved down to places where we have extra time. So we can kind of smooth the workload a little bit. Anybody have any other items? All right. Next item, please.
Next item is business from the city manager. Item one is request for a type four amendment to sections 3.2.400, the Campus Industrial District and 6.1.110 definitions of the Springfield Development Code. This is a third reading. Andy Limbert is here for this item.
Thanks. Good evening, mayor and council. Just in the interest of time, I'll just try to summarize where we are. After the joint public hearing with the Board of County Commissioners, this item was set over for consideration and deliberations by the city council. The council does have a packet of all information available to them. The responses have been provided both by respondents concerned about the Development Code text amendments, responses from the applicant addressing those concerns. What you have before you is a final legislative version of the Development Code text amendments as recommended by the Planning Commission. Staff has summarized the concerns outlined by the various respondents. It seems clear from the evidence and the materials that were submitted, their concerns lie with an outcome that could result in a hospital-type facility. And that is not the case with these proposed Development Code text amendments. They are specific to business parks. There's, they would only affect to existing business parks that are already in operation in the city. It is not likely that we will be seeing a proliferation of business parks in the Campus Industrial District in the future. So it has very limited applicability, which is the desired intent of the applicant to be surgical and specific in these Development Code text amendments to allow for additional types of tendencies within the buildings. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them. And this item is available for council's consideration tonight.
Are there any questions?
I move to adopt an ordinance amending sections 3.2.400 and 6.1.110 of the Springfield Development Code, adopting a savings and severability clause and providing an effective date.
Second.
Well, could you call the vote, please?
Counsel Weber?
Yes.
Counselor Mo?
Yes.
Counselor Rodley?
Yes.
Counselor Blackwell?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Aye.
And Counselor Stout?
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, six yeses, zero noes. Next item, please.
No other business from the city manager's office. Any business from the city attorney?
I have one quick item tonight and I'll try and be as quick as I can. The city has been asked to appear as a friend of a court and two pending appeals. I sent you a memo today. Friend of the court means participating, not as a party, but as an interested entity in the outcome. In this case, that would
but as an interested entity in the outcome. In this case, that would mean signing on to two briefs. One of the matters is a state court matter involving broadening the scope of negligence for inmates held at the jail who are experiencing mental illness. The second one is a constitutional matter involving regulating the media when the, what standard should be applied when the local government is trying to address a large-scale protest. I gave a motion to Council President Weber. I'm happy to answer any questions. I do recommend that the city appears as an amicus for the Columbia County matter. That's the jail matter, because we have a jail. I recommend that we also do it for the Fonseca matter. More strong recommendation for the jail. I believe City of Eugene and League of Oregon cities are participating on the media matter.
Are there any questions? All right.
I move that the city of Springfield participate as an amicus curate by signing on to friend of the court briefs in Derby versus Columbia County and Fonseca versus City of Medford.
Second.
Could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counsel Blackwell.
Yes.
Counsel Doyle.
No.
And Counsel Stout.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, five yeses, one no. Next item, please. That is it. Thank you, everybody. We are adjourned.